All right. Welcome, everyone. We are already in session because we came from executive session. I wanted first to thank you all for being here. I want to apologize to you for being late coming back. It just took us a little longer in executive session. And I personally want to apologize for both the back of my head, it's just because of the net, the, I say it every time, because in work sessions, we face the presentation, and also for my dress, I left two hours to get back from the airport, and that was not enough, so I apologize. All right. And with that, we're back in session, so the work session.
Good evening. So tonight, as part of our strategic plan, we learned last year that the community wanted us to do a better job in informing of the community about school funding and the implications of our funds, and where our funds were coming from, et cetera. So part of our strategic plan in Goal Five, Operational Resources, Finances, Technology and Facilities, we stated that the district has the necessary finances and infrastructure to provide an outstanding 21st century education and keep the community well-informed in how resources, about how resources are being used for school and student performance. So tonight Scott Wortman, our CFO, will present tonight on Goal Five to the community and really educate us on school finances and facilities. And he has someone co-facilitating with him, Jane Geneva, so I turn it over to, I said Wortman, sorry. We have too many Scots in this district. Scott Gaynor, my apologies, Scott Gaynor, our Chief Financial Officer, so I turn it over to Scott.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dixon. All right. Well, we are aware that the Cavs are playing tonight, so we're going to do our best to move through the presentation, but it is an important topic, and we do appreciate the opportunity to be able to speak with you tonight and to provide this. And this will be the first of many opportunities, I think, that we're going to provide in many avenues that we will have for people to learn a little bit about school funding and school finance. I am joined tonight by the Chair of the Lay Finance Committee, Jane Geneva. I will apologize because on the agenda, her name is misspelled, it's J-A-Y-N-E, so we got the name tent right in the presentation right, but not the agenda, so I apologize, Jane. But anyway, Jane's been involved with school funding and school finance for many years, I won't say how many, but she's intimately familiar with many of the issues in the state, so I feel very fortunate that she's with us tonight. And we are going to get right to it. As the superintendent said, you know, it is part of the strategic plan, and making sure that the district does have the necessary finances, and also that people understand where those finances come from, is one of the tenets of Goal Five. So we are going to give a little history, and Jane's going to actually take it from here to talk about school funding. Also mentioned, so you have in front of you a book for your summer book study that is Understanding School, Making Sense of School Finance, that's a publication from OSBA that is updated for the current biennial budget and does show some information, Mr. Register discussed how complex the state funding formula is. It does attempt to explain a little bit of that, so you have that there in front of you, along with a copy of the slides. Feel free to interrupt us at any time and ask questions, and then also you have a copy of Jane's comments, as well as the Lay Finance Committee report, which we'll get to at the end. That'll give it to Jane.
Okay. This is truly just the tip of the iceberg. We don't want to be here forever.
Sorry.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, am I on? Okay.
Thank you.
We don't want to be here forever, and it would take a long, long time to go through all the permutations of the school funding formula in Ohio, so this is an overview. Before reviewing the five-year forecast of the school district's finances, we need to consider school funding on a broader scale. The five-year forecast tells us where we are today and looks ahead to the future, but we need to know why we are here. Public school funding in Ohio is financed from three main sources. A small amount comes from the federal government, the state gives each school district some money, and the largest share comes from local sources in every district. The most complicated is the state share. Primary and secondary education is one of the largest expenditures in the Ohio State legislative budget. A complex primer on the system of funding in Ohio's public education would take too long, but this overview is necessary for understanding the continuing levy demands Ohio's school boards must make on their residents. So here's some history. When Ohio became a state in 1803, the settlers did not have an education system. Parents paid for their children to attend the few schools that existed. The settlers realized that an educational system would have a civilizing effect on the territory. In 1822, Caleb Atwater was successful in convincing the governor and the legislature that a commission should be formed to study the creation of a state educational system to further the value of common schools for Ohio's future education of its citizens. The committee's proposal was opposed by the legislature, but popular pressure from the citizens forced the legislator to reconsider the importance of educated citizens to the growth of the state. In 1825, the Ohio government created a common system of schools and financed public education with a half-mill property tax. Currently, about two-thirds of all property taxes levied in the state go to fund education. The remainder of property tax money is divided among local governments. Having educated citizens of the state has remained an important tenant of Ohioans throughout the state's history, but in 1934, following the Depression, often residents were not able to pay their property taxes. The state then instituted a state sales tax of 3% on certain goods in order to help pay for education. This tax has changed at least 25 times over the years, expanding and contracting the goods and services to which it applies, even the rate has risen and fallen. But one major change over the years is that the money collected is no longer used for the sole purpose of education, as the tax was originally designed. Attempting to minimize the direct tax burden on its citizens, the legislature created another money-raising system in 1975, the Ohio Lottery. Under the Ohio Constitution, the lotteries, quote, "net proceeds," are paid into a fund of the state treasury that shall consist solely of such proceeds and shall be used solely for the support of elementary, secondary, vocational, and special education programs," end quote. In the 41 years of the lottery's existence, over $20 billion has been recorded in profits. What has happened to this money? Have the schools seen an increase in funding? No, because although the profits have gone into the state education budget, they have only replaced dollars that were then removed from the education budget and placed into the state general fund. So money in, money out, the 612 school districts don't profit. Additionally, the Columbus Dispatch reported that although more lottery money is going to education, education's percentage of total lottery cash has steadily declined, from 40% the first year to 29.8% in 2013. The legislature then expanded this form of money-raising to include casinos and lottery machines during the 2008 and 2009 property value decline, but no increase in funding accrued to the school districts. Then in 2009, the state expanded the use of lottery profits to also include casinos. Again, the prospect of funding education was a selling point in this ballot issue. The scheme has not been particularly helpful to schools, however, as they collect about $50 per student from these businesses per year. In 1976, due to other economic pressures, education funding took another hit. The House Bill 920 statute froze property taxes at the amount they were assessed in the original year of assessment. So even if a piece of property rose in value with inflation, the tax level remained at the original lower rate. Property taxes did not increase with the increase in value of the property. The dollar amount of levy raises is frozen at the initial dollar amount over time. This law is one of the major reasons why school districts are forced to put levies on the ballot periodically. There is no built-in inflation factor for running school districts. Cities and counties, on the other hand, are usually run on income taxes, which rise with inflation. These taxing and funding policies in Ohio have had the effect of making Ohioans face more school tax levies than any other state, 5,946 levies from 2001 to 2015. The CHUH district has voted 139 mills, but we can only collect taxes of 71.2 mills, the effective millage rate, due to House Bill 920. Since 1971, the taxpayer has not paid all of the taxes charged for residential and agricultural real estate taxes. A discount of 10% was given to all properties, an additional 2.5% was given to residential property taxpayers. These discounts were called rollbacks. The state provided money to pay for these taxpayer rollback amounts to the school districts. In addition, another discount was granted to seniors over 65, regardless of income, under the homestead exemption of $8.75 per mill of tax. Unfortunately, the state has eliminated the 10% and 2.5% rollbacks for new and renewal levies as of 2013. The homestead exemption now will only be granted to new applicants with an income figure of $30,000 or less. Are you getting this bleak picture? It gets worse and worse. More and more of the dollars that the state used to provide to districts now must come directly out of local citizens' pockets as the state revises the funding rules for public education and reduces the amount it will put in its budget to educate Ohioans, the tangible personal property tax. Taxes based on general business, telephone and telecommunications, and railroad properties were also used to be used to benefit public education in Ohio. But in the push to help the economy of the state and add jobs and create more businesses, the legislature began to subtly change these policies in the 90s. In 2005, under House Bill 66, these taxes were to be eliminated over several years. At the end, there would be no general tangible values left in the property tax base of school districts. The law provided, however, a hold harmless period, a phasing out, during which time the districts would receive what they would have received had the taxes remained in place. That hold harmless period ended in 2013. A commercial activity tax was enacted in the restructuring, which was to fund the replacement payments indefinitely, but these were vetoed by Governor Kasich. The overall effect of this TTP tax restructuring is that school districts first had their TTP tax amount reduced, second, they now have a smaller tax base from which to generate future revenues, and third, the state general revenue stream for school districts is also reduced. Thus far, we have only talked about monies that were originally intended by the people of Ohio to go to education, which largely have been distributed elsewhere, but were voted on as taxes. But of course, that's only part of the funding story. The education money given to districts under the straight formula itself is broadly supposed to take into account the characteristics of the district, including the capacity of the district to pay. And the formula is the basis for the state's funding mechanism to local schools, although it is too complex to decipher this evening. The base of the formula relies on real estate property taxes, just as we saw in 1825, but with many layers of financial configurations on top. The Constitution provides that only 10 mills, known as inside mills, can be non-voted mills, and these are to be divided among schools, counties, special districts, and cities. The remaining millage, outside mills, any millage over the first 10, must be taxes voted by the residents. In our school district, these mills also cover the CHUH library. Because of the many types of property in Ohio, agricultural, commercial, industrial, and residential, and the fact that the Ohio Department of Education uses one formula for all students, several cases have been brought over the years. Maintaining a new system of financing public education must be created in Ohio. In 1997, 1997, do you hear that? The Ohio Supreme Court declared that Ohio's systems funding of public education based on property taxes was unconstitutional, but the court also said the legislature would have to create a more equitable system. The new system has not been established to this date. Thus, the fact that we live in a residential community with little commercial and industrial property means our home taxes are what must pay for our education of our young people. We do not have heavy trucks ruining our streets all the time, our hair is not smoggy, and we are not choking on factory waste spewing out of smokestacks. We have chosen to live in a peaceful residential place, and our residential property taxes are how we pay for our educational system according to current state law. Additional state laws have affected school districts' funding as well. The legislature provided for tax abatements to real properties within school districts. In some places, the school districts have input on these abatements to their funding sources; in others, they do not. Tax increment financing, another economic engine used by the state, allows new commercial development to use their taxable real estate monies to fund site improvements. The effect is to reduce school monies in order to increase the flow of monies for economic development. Also, under state law, we, as a public institution, must admit all students between the ages of 6 and 18 who are considered residents in our district. We may not pick and choose, we educate all of them. Particular state mandates apply to students under various categories, and not all of these costs are funded. We are required by state law to bus any students in grades K through 8 who live two miles or more from their schools, whether or not they attend our public institutions. In Cleveland Heights, University Heights, we bus about as many public school students as we do private school students. There are other mandates of the state, of course, and most do not come with dollars attached. State mandates such as the third-grade reading guarantee, the Ohio Teacher Evaluation Program, and the College Credit Plan are a few. These unfunded mandates must all be provided with local dollars. Although the inflationary costs of education increase, the education funding is fixed and inflexible. Many costs are out of the control of the local school boards: consumer goods, utilities, legal requirements, unfunded mandates, expanded services wanted by the communities. Education is a personnel-intensive business. People teach our young citizens. We are not dealing with machines and widgets. In Ohio, the funding for education is lower today than it was in 2008. In part, the decline in real property values is to blame for this situation. Yet each year, we read about Ohio monies intended for public school education being diverted to charter and private school programs. In our district, this amounts to millions of dollars. Also, another point to clarify, operating funds are used to educate students. Tax monies collected for capital improvements may not be used for capital, may only be used for capital expenditures. Those money may not be used for operating the district. Money to run the district is voted as operating levy money. In sum, our property taxes pay to educate our young citizens under the structure of finance established by the state, whereby each community gets a say in how strong it wants its educational system to be. Historically, each district must repeatedly go to its residents, usually about every three years, to reaffirm how important education is to that community. The levies enable the district to maintain its system, since there is no automatic inflationary increase, yet inflation raises the costs of utilities, supplies, and labor. Given the numerous studies conducted nationally, as well as regionally, we know that education plays a strong part in lifting our economy, and without valued education, we will falter. Education leads to jobs, which lead to a strong community. And with that educational underpinning, we can now look at the five-year forecast.
Thanks, Jane.
Thanks very much.
All right. So we're going to hit a few points just before we get into the forecast itself that Jane touched on a little bit, but just to reiterate. Oh, first, we have this meme that I found. John Green is the author of The Fault in Our Stars, and so he's a young adult author, and he had this quote that he, let me explain why I like to pay taxes for schools, even though I personally don't have a kid in school, it's because I don't like living in a country with a bunch of stupid people, so I thought that was kind of funny, so I threw it in there to liven it up a little. All right. So here's a graph, okay, of the schools, sources of school revenue. And so again, this is specific to our district, so you can see visually what Jane was speaking of, which is that property taxes really are the bulk of where our money comes from. 72%. Now, that includes the homestead rollback that Jane was speaking of also, which doesn't happen moving forward, but for past levies exists. And then we have state funding at 19%. We have a little bit of federal money, which is Medicaid reimbursement. Now, we get other federal funds, but they're accounted for outside of our general fund, so we get grants and some entitlements that way, but that's not in this equation in terms of what we're speaking of tonight. And then we have 8% of miscellaneous, which would be tuition, could be interest, income, return advances that we would make to general funds, that's what that category is made up of. So, you know, there's this theory that education funding in the state of Ohio is a shared responsibility between the state and local. I think that's probably not the case, as you can see here. A couple of other points on property taxes. As Jane mentioned, we are primarily residential here in the Heights, 83%. So we don't have a large industrial and commercial tax base like a Beechwood or a Solon might have, where, you know, those businesses would pay much of the property taxes of any school levy, so we, our residents bear the burden of that. I also note here that, you know, we're not collecting all the taxes that are due us. This rate has been rising, as you know, from the previous five-year forecast, so 93.41% is what is estimated by the county in terms of our property tax collection rate for next school year. And then again, as Jane mentioned, House Bill 920, we had 139, we have 139.2 voted mills, but the effective mills are only 71.29. Yes, sir?
First one would be, when you say collection rate, that's basically the taxes that we're not collecting, that would be delinquencies, correct?
They can be delinquencies, foreclosures. We are not receiving that six and a half percent.
So I just want a clarification, it's not that we're not, we don't want the...
Oh, right. It's not that we're not trying.
Right, exactly.
Exactly. Or it's not that the county's not trying.
Exactly. And prior to the recession, what was our normal collection rate?
Back in the day, it used to hover around 98%.
Okay.
So it went down to just under 90 at its worst point, and it's been slowly increasing. So I want to say last year, and I could get the exact number for you, but it's about 92.5%, and so it's up nearly a percent in their estimation. Yes, sir?
Are the inside mills affected by House Bill 920?
They're not.
Okay. And also on the effective mills, that goes to, I don't know if you're going to speak to it later, what one mill generates in our community is vastly different from in other communities, so...
It is.
I think Beechwood, I think, generates approximately, we do about, I think, a million dollars per mill. Beechwood's, I think, maybe, let's say, 3 million per mill. So for, if we put on, what takes us a nine-mill levy would take them substantially smaller millage as well.
That's a good point, yes. They have much higher property value.
So it's much easier for them to...
Although, our district is considered a wealthy district, and we will get there with the state funding formula, but we are considered a high-wealth district because we're property-dense, and so our amount of state funding is reduced because we're considered a high-wealth district, or I would consider Beechwood a high-wealth district.
If memory serves, they're the wealthiest district in the state of Ohio.
I don't know if that's still true, but it was, certainly, yeah. And so speaking of that state funding, so here, our state share is 31%. So in that very complex state funding formula that Jane alluded to, and also Mr. Register spoken about before, the state actually will look at the three-year average of your assessed valuation total, and they will reduce, and there are some other factors, but that's primarily the factor they use, to reduce the amount of per-pupil funding that they give each district. So a rural district who doesn't have a lot of wealth in, within the confines of the district will get a much higher state share, it could be as much as 50%, whereas Cleveland Heights is considered wealthy, Cleveland Heights and University Heights combined, we receive 31%. So if you look at it that way, then, you know, $5,900 per student is what the state would provide, and we get about $1,800 per student, because of 31%. Yes, sir?
Now, in the, the funding from the state, that is per pupil, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that's a question, it's a leading question going to the next one, the, because I, this just pisses me off. The money that we're losing to school choice programs and all those, those students are not counted in our attendance numbers, true or false?
They're accounted in our funding numbers, because we get the money at the top, but then the money is deducted at the bottom. So we get, so there's, what would happen is, we would get the $1,800 for that student, but then we would lose the 59.
Okay.
So the, all of the 18 we get at the top of the formula goes with the student, as well as a portion of local revenue.
So we become a pass-through.
Yeah.
So then the question, but the flip side is that we still, then our, the, how much the check, the check, if you will, they get 5,900, the state's only giving us 1,800.
Correct.
So we have a $4,100 gap.
$3,100.
$3,000, I'm sorry, thank you.
Yes.
$3,100 that we're paying out of, basically, so in effect, then, that's coming out of the money from our, the 71% that we generate from local dollars, correct? So in effect, then, the entire population of CHUH is in effect subsidizing the education for those children going to a non-public school?
Yes.
Okay. And from looking at the list you gave, or Ron was good enough to give us, the overwhelming majority of those are religious institutions?
Many for, for at least the Ed Choice option.
Okay. I just want to mention...
For the community schools, it can be some of the, yeah.
Right, okay. I just want to mention, okay.
Yes, absolutely. And as you did mention, there is a guarantee, so that's, as you described it as a very simplistic kind of analysis, there are a lot of factors in terms of like weights for our special needs students and other monies that we get from the state for transportation, and what happens is, there would be, there is a guarantee every biennial budget where, you know, the legislature will say, you will get at least as much money this year as you received last year. So they kind of back into this formula, the components change every biennial budget, what they call them, you'll have cost of doing business factors, you'll have just things that come and go with each legislature, but ultimately, we found that they have this guarantee or kind of a hold harmless. So overall, we received $18 million in state funding last year, we're going to get $18 million in state funding this year. So that guarantee will kind of fluctuate based on the individual components of the forecast, of the formula, but right now, as it stands, we get about $2.1 million over and above the per-pupil amount in guarantee money.
Now, you would refer, or I think Jane referenced the discussion about eliminating the guarantee.
Yes.
The question I would pose is, what is the impetus for this, and then what's their, okay, if they eliminate it, what are they going to do?
Well, the governor believes that you should be paid, we all should be paid for the number of students we have.
Okay.
So he would suggest that we should see no guarantee, there should be no guarantee, we will see at least as much money as we had before, and we just would lose it in his perfect world. So that's been the threat, and that was in the initial phases of the biennial budgets before, but that's when we get involved at the local level, at the state level, through our organizations, with advocates that we have and lobbyists that we have to say, this is how you're going to impact our district, and really, the large urbans are really impacted by the guarantee, because they've lost a lot of students, they're being held at a level of state funding that they, according to the governor, really shouldn't be getting because they have far fewer students than they did before.
Now, for us, then, if the, let's say, you know, God forbid it happens, what would that be from a financial standpoint for us?
So we would lose this 2.1.
Okay.
So the two, if the guarantee goes away, we're down $2.1 million annually.
And, but that wouldn't, so it would be the $19 million number would be less than 2.1?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Less the 6.7 that we're losing in transfers for these school choice programs, so Ed Choice, John Peterson Scholarship, and community and charter schools. So the total state funding is $19 million from all those pieces and parts, which guarantee of 2.1 million is a part of, but we're losing $6.7 million of that annually to other options.
Okay.
Let's hear, oh, so, okay, so move on to, so any other questions about revenue that I can answer? I mean, we will look at the forecast briefly, but just if there are any other state funding or kind of revenue-related questions that I can answer. So on the expenditure side of the house, and Jane also spoke a little to this, you know, we are people serving kids, so, you know, 76% of our budget is salary and benefits. It tends to hover around 80% for districts. I think our numbers are being skewed a little bit because of the 18% in the purchase services tuition, but again, that tuition number is that $6.7 million that we just saw on this previous slide for these school choice options. What happens is the state gives it to us in revenue, and then they have us record it under expense as tuition when it leaves us, so that net, we see the $19 million less than 6.7. Does that make sense? Does that make sense? So, again, salaries and benefits is the bulk. Then we have the eighteen percent in both the tuition, which is the largest portion of that number, and then purchase services would be, you know, if you had attorney's fees or auditor fees, like to do the financial audit or those kinds of things. Then supplies and textbooks, capital improvements, there is a small part of the general fund budget where we do buy things that are classified as capital, even though we have a permanent improvement levy that's specifically for that purpose. And then other under this is mostly, it can be, it can vary, but the biggest part of this other is the county auditor fees. So, we pay the county, to your point of, we go, I mean, they try, they charge us a million and a half dollars a year to collect the property taxes that we're due. So, that's the cost that you see there that makes up the bulk of that.
Wow.
Coming and going.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, again, and I do reference it here because I wanted to make sure that that point came up, because a lot of people don't realize that, that we note the auditor's fees of one and a half million dollars, and again, that's the county auditor collecting our property taxes. That's different from the audit that we have to have on an annual basis for the financial statements and that kind of thing. Also, of note, that we have had ongoing budget reductions. We had five million dollars reduced in fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, and then the three and a quarter million dollars staffing reduction so far for two thousand and seventeen. And then, again, I note the charter schools, Ed Choice, and the Peterson Scholarship increases that you're seeing in the forecast. So, that number has significantly increased within the last couple of years, and we anticipate, based on how aggressively these options are being marketed, that we're going to see some continued increase in those numbers. The five-year forecast, a little hard to read here, so that's why everyone has a copy of this in their handout. At the board's request, this is going to be a document that we will bring to you every month, as Mr. Posh suggested. Legally, we're required to do it every October and May, and what it does is, you have three years of history, your current year budget, and four years out. So, it's a planning tool. You do have to make some assumptions, and you'll hear a little bit when Jane discusses the recommendation from the Lay Finance Committee, that there are some assumptions, and when you go four and five years out, that can get a little tricky depending on what you're assuming. But the top half of your equation is the revenue, and then the bottom half are those expenditures that we were discussing before. I don't have anything specifically to talk about with the forecast, or this version of the forecast, other than to say, the only difference in this forecast from previous forecast would be the staffing reductions that we just made. So, those numbers are in this forecast, and there was a slight increase in insurance come January, so that was also included in this forecast. But this is the five-year forecast that has been shared, for example, when we have our conversations with the unions and discuss the financial position of the district and the condition and kind of where we expect to be. This is what we're looking at. So, you'll see in this specific one, you know, that ending cash balance is really what we're looking at when we're trying to see where we stand, because the formula is really pretty simple. You just have your beginning cash balance, you add all those sources of revenue as they come in, deduct your expenses, and that gives you an ending cash, and you just carry that to the next year and it flows through. So, you'll see for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, we're expecting still to have about a fourteen million, fourteen, fifteen million dollar cash balance. That starts going down to an eight and a half million dollar cash balance in two thousand and seventeen, which, just to put it in context, one month payroll for the district is about six point eight million dollars. So, you know, when you start to get down to that level, you can worry a little bit, and that's why we have caution there, the yellow. And then you see the deficit starting in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, and that continues to build.
Now, in this, there's no money from the PI for issue eighty-one, correct? Those money?
That's correct. The PI, the bond issue, everything is out of this equation entirely. This is the general fund only. So, your general fund operations.
Because those dollars cannot be used for...
Correct.
So, now, are there any documents, because I'm thinking as far as some of our friends from, who would like to spend a lot of time on the internet, there would be some documents somewhere that would have those dollars counted on our balance sheet, correct? Or no?
Which dollars?
Oh, no, the bond, the bond.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. So, we're still required, although this is all we discuss in terms of talking about the financial position, because this is the main operating fund. I think we have more probably sixty funds that we manage that are all audited, you know, as part of the financial statement. Because we're a school district, we have cash basis fund accounting, so the bond issue is in a separate fund. PI is in a separate fund, general fund, food services is in a separate fund, all of the grants and the federal entitlements are in separate funds.
The point being is, it's conceivable that there's documents somewhere else that's going to show, I don't know how much we spent down in the PI, let's say, we spent down fifty. Theoretically, you could have a document that has another hundred million dollars, which is the money earmarked for the...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, well, the bond, well, the high school projects is what, a hundred and fifty-five million? So, yeah, I mean, but, I mean, when it comes to day-to-day operations, food service, that's a drop in the bucket compared to...
Correct.
Because everything else is teeny.
Well, no, but my point, what I was trying to, what I was saying was that if somebody sees something that says, oh, what are you talking about? You're going to be a deficit in a year or two, you've got another hundred million dollars, that's the reason why. Those are funds that cannot be used for operations, and they're, the bond specifically says they have to be used for the capital project.
Correct. And actually, you know, all those other funds are restricted for specific purposes. The general fund is really the only one that's discretionary and can be used for operations. And so, to your point, I have received questions in the past where someone might look at the CAFR...
Right.
And see where it will give a number across all funds, because that's one of the requirements you have to have in that document.
CAFR is...
And the comprehensive annual financial report, so, that we produce on an annual basis. So, as I said, we're on a cash basis, fund accounting system here, but, and every school district is required to be that way. But once a year, you have to do a GAAP conversion, do your accruals, liabilities, prepaid, all that kind of thing to create. We create a CAFR and provide that. But it can be misleading, and I do get some questions sometimes to say, well, why am I seeing all these numbers that are over and above what I see here?
Yeah, just a question about Medicaid. I know we had a situation where they actually, they actually defunded us, didn't they, on Medicaid?
They...
And then they, we litigated, and...
We did.
And so, most of the Medicaid that we see this year is from past years?
Yes, we actually saw a bump, and you'll see that, so, under miscellaneous, or under, I'm sorry, the federal sources, so you see a hundred and forty-four thousand, sixty thousand, fifty thousand, then one point two million.
But then goes down to three fifty.
Yeah, so, and then down to three fifty. So, three fifty is what we should get on an annual basis roughly.
Okay, so, they paid us all that back stuff now?
They paid us a lot of back stuff. We got it this year. They actually sent it by check. Go figure.
Wow, a wonderful...
I like seeing that check.
Wow.
But, and actually, we've been involved because, again, the legislature is trying to make it difficult, well, actually, I guess it's the feds in this case, and make the requirements for us to get that Medicaid reimbursement for serving Medicaid-eligible students harder, more difficult by having to have more...
But that's probably the state, because they, the Medicaid money is actually coming through the state, isn't it?
It is.
And the state's kind of making their own little rules about it, I think.
But I think what's happened is that the feds are actually, there's some federal requirements that probably haven't been done, the state hasn't done what they need to do necessarily, and so, there's, there are going to be some further requirements passed down to us. And actually, you know, many districts got together, superintendents, to advocate at the state level that those changes not be implemented too quickly, because they wanted them to start July one, and districts weren't able to react quickly enough, so...
So, do we feel like we're getting paid for the services we render?
I think we're getting paid for a portion. I don't know, Mr. Johnson, what you'd say about that?
Do you have any idea to what extent?
As a percentage of the actual amount of work we do and the level of reimbursement, I don't know.
That's more difficult.
That's a good question. We, I mean, they set rates that we can get for certain services. And so, you know, we have, our folks do all the billings that they can do to receive the maximum amount they can, but does that offset the cost of those people and those services? No.
Okay. Now, historic, when we were on a three-year levy cycle, I think typically, to a degree, we sort of view the first year, you run a cash surplus, the second year, you run equal, if you will, and then the third year, you burn through your, I shouldn't say burn, you utilize your, the surplus, the carryover from the first year.
Correct.
So, that's, to a degree, that's, well, we haven't had an operating issue on this spreadsheet, though, but that would be what we would see on there. Correct me if I'm wrong, the state requires us to show ability to fund ourselves through five years, correct? Or no?
They, yes, well, they, what they want to see, if there is a deficit, a looming deficit, they do what they did with the superintendent there, where they require us to submit a written plan of action as to how the district intends to deal with that issue.
So, with this five-year forecast, we got to submit a plan of action as well?
We did.
Okay.
We submitted, we submitted a document to how Department of Education and said that in part, it was the staff reductions that happened in terms of trying to, you know, put the staffing levels and where they needed to be, but also, we indicated that, you're leading us there, that we would have to have some additional revenue, and that we were committed to doing something to get additional revenue. And with schools, as Jane described, there's really only one way to do it, and that kind of leads us right here, which is a quote from the most current OSBA article that says, you know, there are two kinds of school districts in Ohio, those are on the ballot and those it will be. Because really, as you said, and as Eric was pointing out, your revenue is flat, so what happens is your revenue kind of goes this path where you have your flat revenue, then you have to pass a levy, flat again, pass a levy, flat. So, it's a step kind of a thing, where your expenses, programming being equal, just steadily climb. So, you have to pick a window and a period of time that you want to cover where your expenses are increasing over that flat plateau, and determine how much millage you want for an operating levy. So, that's kind of where we are there with that. But are there any other questions I can answer before we leave the five-year forecast slide?
I mean, you're going to go into mill models?
Yes.
A little bit, okay.
Well, the only thing I was going to say was, correct me if I'm wrong, the part of the reason why we were able, we didn't, we failed, we were on the ballot in the spring of fifteen, this is two thousand and sixteen, the spring of fifteen, we did not pass, we didn't go back on the ballot, and part of the, we had significant reductions, and we also, when we closed Wiley, we saw some economies of scale, and unfortunately, whatever surplus we generated, I should say surplus, the revenues that we saved, unfortunately, instead of us putting those back into programming, we ostensibly used them to, between the staff reductions and the savings from Wiley, that got us another year.
Right. So, we actually, what was intended to be a three-year levy back in two thousand and eleven has been now stretched five.
Got you.
And that would bring us to the Lay Finance Committee recommendation, and then we'll just talk about the mill mods briefly.
Right. Well, the Lay Finance Committee carefully considered the parameters of the five-year forecast of the district's finances in light of what we know about school funding currently. We also tried to protect the district against the unknowable at this point in time. Considering our earlier discussion, we know that school district levies are expected to last about five years. Our last levy was fi, uh, three years. Our last levy was five years ago. Our administrators and school board members have tightened the belt to make the levy last for five years instead of the planned three. The Lay Finance Committee sees the necessity for a November two thousand and sixteen levy, monies of which are not collectible until two thousand and seventeen, to continue maintaining our current education programs. In looking at models for future funding of our district, we considered three possibilities. One, waiting until two thousand and seventeen to place a levy on the ballot. Two, trying to establish a four-year levy cycle. And three, placing a levy on the ballot in the fall of two thousand and sixteen, collectible in two thousand and seventeen, which is our recommendation. First, looking at the projections, a levy delay until two thousand and seventeen will mean we need an eleven point eight mil levy to cover the same expenses we could cover now with five point five mills. We are also concerned about waiting until two thousand and seventeen because there are so many uncertainties on the political funding landscape. Should the guarantee, as has been promised, be eliminated, we would lose millions of dollars. Should the depression of real estate values continue, we would not even reap the same amount of tax dollars we are currently receiving. In the second situation, trying to establish a four-year levy cycle in two thousand and sixteen with an eight point five mil levy, it would allow us to conceivably have a four-year cycle, but we would be taking many chances with the budget, given that four-year period of time. Again, because of the uncertainties of the state funding, the committee felt trying to project out four years would be taking too big a risk. Our funding might increase from the state, but more likely, it would be cut. Just review the funding losses in the last six years, which we just discussed about earlier. The district would have better control over programming and personnel with a three-year levy in two thousand and sixteen. So, the third choice, a levy in the fall of two thousand and sixteen, which would not be collectible until two thousand and seventeen, a five point five mil levy would enable us to accommodate slight inflationary increases without large budget cuts. Since the district cut five million out of the budget last year alone, we believe a five point five mil levy is necessary to maintain at least our current programs. The five point five mil levy provides no cushion in FY two thousand and nineteen, not even one month's payroll, which is what we traditionally have felt is necessary. The school district, it should be noted, has no rainy day fund like the state has created with our funds, I might add. The committee recommends five point five mills as the minimum. We have taken into consideration the desires of the community not to raise taxes more than necessary to maintain what we currently have. So, considering all the assumptions of the forecast, the political uncertainties, and the need to continue the basic services we provide for our students, the committee recommends the board place a five point five mil levy on the ballot this November two thousand and sixteen.
And so, you can see what that looks like. Again, Eric spoke to a millage model. This is the three-year option with a levy this November. The equation is, again, a pretty simple one. You just take your receipts and your expenditures right from the five-year forecast, those come right into this, into this model. Find out over what period of time, so, a levy in sixteen, since you always have to remember that the levy, the property tax collections lag one calendar year, and they're on a calendar year, not a fiscal year, because our year's July one to June thirtieth. So, if we pass a levy in two thousand and sixteen, the collections start in two thousand and seventeen, but really, there's only half a year left in fiscal two thousand and seventeen. So, you get half your collection in seventeen, full year collection in eighteen, full year collection in nineteen. You look at how much money you're, you have a deficit over the course of those three years that you want the levy to last, deduct your beginning cash balance from the equation, see your deficit, and that tells you how many mills, when we have estimated one, a million fifty-five thousand dollars per mil. So, five point five mills is what would take us through fiscal nineteen, as Jane indicated, in that scenario. And then the question always comes, well, what if we just wait a sixth year, and, you know, and not go on until two thousand and seventeen? The problem you have in that is, so now, to have the same three-year cycle, you're bringing in fiscal year two thousand and twenty, which, again, your expenses are continuing to rise, your revenue is continuing along a flat line, bring in fiscal twenty, and still have that two and a half years of collection, you need eleven point eight mills in that scenario. Jane also indicated there was a third millage model that I don't have a slide for here, but we can discuss if you want, which is, what would it look like if we went on in sixteen but wanted that levy to last for four years? And so, we would, we bring in fiscal twenty into that equation, and that scenario is eight and a half mills. So, five and a half mills, if we go on this November and want it, and project it to be sufficient for at least three years. Eight and a half mills, if we go on this November and want that to last four years. Or eleven point eight mills, if we want to wait until calendar seventeen and not see any new money until eighteen forward, and that would last three years.
So, before we get into questions, just one thing, we've been hearing Ms. Geneva come to speak to us about this since she was a teenager, I think.
Yeah, 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 for sure, for sure.
So, and I got to tell you, this, the comprehensive history was a really good touch. So, and I got to tell you, this, the comprehensive history was a really good touch, I mean, it really gives perspective, because it is, it's an extremely difficult topic to cover, and between you and the, and the rest of the Lay Finance Committee, we owe you a huge credit, debt of gratitude. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
But I'll let you guys ask questions, please.
I didn't review my history and chronology of school levies going back, which I, I've got to find the document. It's been five years since our last operating levy. Do you recall, because I don't recall a fi, I know we've gone four years, in the eighties it was, unfortunately, the early eighties was almost every two or three years, typically we're in a three-year cycle, we've had a few four years. Have we, I can't recall us having a five-year spread, do you?
Not since I've been here, since 1980.
Okay.
No, we never, we never had a levy since, that was five years.
Usually, the longest has been four, we never had five years.
Right, and '76 was when House Bill 920 went in, so it's, I think, fair to say we didn't have one before that.
The second question I would pose is usually, in my youth, it was 8.9 mil levies, 9.5. The last, I think the spring of '15 was one of the lowest we've had, we considered, correct me if I'm wrong, this is, is this the lowest one we've had in, lowest project, it seems in at least another 15 to 20 years without a doubt.
Over 20 years.
Sure.
Okay. I'm going to have to go back and check my history.
Yeah, we have a chronology too, but I would, I think that's right. I think that, you know, other than the permanent improvement levy back in the day, and that was 3.8.
Right, well, those, yeah.
But those are typically lower.
And I think in the early eighties, they hadn't, they were doing frequent, small millage ones, but so in the last 25 to 30 years, I don't recall anything this low or this sporadic, I guess.
Yeah, this is the longest we've gone, and still have the lowest amount of millage. And in part, that millage was able to come down in this scenario because of the staffing reductions for the next school year.
I wanted to ask the history question. You know, I was understanding that the 1851 Constitutional Convention is when it was decided, that Constitution decided that it was a state responsibility. Prior to that, was it just local districts putting money together to have, to fund their schools? Do you know anything about that?
No, except that in '25, the state said, we're going to put a half-mil tax down to pay for schools in the state. So it was certainly a state responsibility when they first started it. I don't know how they exactly collected it, but it was a half-mil levy then.
And so how did it, do you know anything about how it got to be more?
I think probably you needed more, more money to establish more schools, to create more classes, to educate more students. I don't know when the law went into effect of you had to be educated if you were between the ages of six and 18, but sometime when that happened, I'm sure they needed more money.
Okay, just to editorialize, just briefly, I mean, we're really, am I allowed to use the word screwed?
We already been down that road already earlier.
Am I offending anybody, Eric? I mean, we're being screwed by the state. I mean, when, when you look at it, 20% of our revenue comes from the state, and you would argue that's not enough to begin with, but then on top of it, one-third of that just goes away, and it goes away toward organizations that don't have to be held accountable to the same standards that we have to be accountable. So you take, you know, my favorite example is Noble, I mean, Noble's a great school, Martha's failing for many, many different reasons, okay? Including the fact we've got a high concentration of English as a second language, it's not built into the test, I mean, I can go on and on and on, but here we are, in a great school, we have people taking advantage of money that's essentially flowing out of our pocket because of that situation, and they're going to schools that have no regulation, no test scores. I mean, they're not being held accountable. I mean, I mean, the issue here is, we have essentially a $5.6 million gap, an annual gap to fill, and 6.5 of that money is, or 6.5 million that's actually coming in from the state is just going out. It's preposterous, and everybody has been saying that, you've got to fix this problem, you've got to fix this problem, but the state legislature continually makes it worse. I mean, and they want to, they want to privatize education. So basically, what that code word is, we want to take away good union jobs, and we want to take the differential money that those, you know, union workers would actually get, and let's give them to the profits in a corporation that's actually going to run these schools. And by the way, let's not make them accountable, like we have to make, you know, our public schools accountable. So, I don't know, I.
There's a real conversation for us to have, because ultimately, you know, I began to think about it in a political sense. The people that 612 districts across this country elected board members represent are the same people that the state legislature's bodies get voted in by, and I just think we've got to create a political movement to see any change around this. It was nice to have the DeRoth stuff coming to play, but now it's another level that has to be enacted in order for us to get this done, so we might as well gear up for it.
Well, you know, in our last board meeting, Ron brought this up, and, you know, we as a board are committed to working with our peers in the state to try to deal with that, and that's not something I think you've seen other boards do, and I'm glad you're, I'm all behind you, I'd do whatever I can to, to deal with that. But, I mean, the reality is, we need to put a levy on the ballot. I mean, we are trying to live within our means, but we physically cannot, okay, just because our costs creep. So we have $5.6 million if the levy, we have to cut $5.6 million if the levy fails. Now, we know we made a significant number of cuts to personnel within the last 30 to 60 days. There was, you know, it was an unfortunate reality, the community was up in arms about it. I mean, literally, there was a mob that came up to us, and most of those people that spoke, spoke eloquently, and they were right. I mean, they don't want bigger class sizes, we don't want bigger class sizes. But the reality is, if this thing fails, we have to make more cuts. And it seems to me that in past levy campaigns, and this, I mean, full disclosure, everybody, I mean, I think most of, most everybody knows, I sat with Jane in the Lay Finance Committee. It was great times, not, but, I mean, it's, I mean, it's really good to learn what the problem is, and you've done such a great job articulating that tonight, and that's, that's great. But also, I've sort of worked as a parent to see that school levies do get passed, and even leading levy campaigns. Obviously, in my position here, I can't, I can't do that anymore, and I'm sorry I can't. But I think it's helpful for the community when our volunteers are out talking about the levy and why it's needed, to really get a full understanding of what happens if this thing doesn't pass. I mean, we saw three, 400 people talk to us in our board meeting a month and a half ago, where clearly, our teacher base was upset, our students were upset, that we have to make ends meet financially. You know, money does not grow on trees, I mean, we have to live within whatever financial vehicles we could take advantage of, to live within. But I think we really need to let our community understand what that 5.6 million means if it doesn't pass. It means X number of teachers, it means X number of administrators. I mean, we're at a point administratively wise, with all the unfunded mandates, if we don't, if we cut any more, we can't do the things the state wants us to do. Likewise, we can't keep class sizes the way they should be. So I almost think that our community needs to know, this is the cut list if it doesn't pass. I mean, a lot of times, people have been afraid that, well, we don't want to threaten the community, but I think we need to communicate that to the community, I mean, no threats, I mean, this is the way it is, I mean, these are our financials, it's open books. If we can't live within our, if we can't pass the levy, this is what has to happen next year. And I think that would be very, I think, helpful to the folks that are trying to run the campaign, and I think it's really good for the community to understand really, truly what's at stake.
I'd like to thank Jim for being the angry person at the table instead of me for a chance. The, I think, one of, and piggybacking on what Jim was saying, I think we need to, unfortunately, and Jane and Scott would know particularly from a levy standpoint, typically, we've been, if we fail in the spring, we're back in November, and then if we fail in November, we're back on in the following spring. We've, I think, part of the issue we have to work beyond is that, even though it'll be, if we go in November, it'll be a year and a half since spring of 2015, this is ostensibly the second attempt, and we need to, I think, make people very cognizant and aware of that. We've already reduced $8 million after the first failure, so, you know, going to Jim's point, we really, we had the need to view this as a second attempt, and not, oh, it's another first attempt. Another, and Scott, I'm going to harp on this just because it irks me, if we, from the $6 million, if I cut that in half just because I'm a nice guy, and that's $3 million that we're losing to Peterson and all these other ones, $3 million by our mill scenario, that's equivalent to three mils.
About three mils, yeah.
So I could theoretically argue then, if it weren't for the state taking that money and giving it to unregulated, undocumented, non-publics, theoretically, we could, we'd have a lower mill model, theoretically. And going to Ron's number, as far as the last five years of well over $10 million, it would be even substantially lower. I mean, there's no way, we couldn't, we could not function without the cycle because of the way the state is set up.
Right.
This rigged system, but if it weren't for the states, if it weren't for the state balancing their budget at our expense, we could theoretically have less frequent levies and lower millage levies.
So how does it work? There has to be, is it first reading?
There needs to be two readings before August. I do have the language that we had squires prepare with a blank millage amount. So if the board is inclined, you could have your first reading, if you, if you have a millage amount that you want to put in there, then what happens is, I would take the resolution, I deliver it to the county, they certify that the amount of millage we believe that will collect, we will collect, and then we bring another resolution back to the board. You take a final vote, and then it's, I deliver that to the county.
Is a motion accepting the recommendation of the Lay Finance Committee in order, and would that trigger us actually being able to put this resolution together?
Well, you wouldn't necessarily need a resolution accepting the recommendation, you could have that resolution if you wanted to have such a thing, but you, you would actually formally have to have this resolution you have in front of you, and I would recommend if you did, you would read that.
So just, if I could just ask you, wait just a second, because I just had a couple of questions of my own, if you don't mind, if, I don't know if that's where you're headed, but.
No, I just wanted to know the process, I mean, be clear on the process.
Okay, no problem. Couple of things real quickly. First, just sort of vis a vis the conversation we had, a number of years back, I was asked to give a talk to one of the government classes at Heights High, as a politician, I guess, but the, but, but one of the questions, I explained the whole DeRoth decision, I explained the fact that it had been declared unconstitutional, one of the questions, one of the students asked me was, I don't get it, if I do something unconstitutional, don't I go to jail? And if the state does something unconstitutional, what are the repercussions? And I left. But, no, I honestly had no great answer to that question. I only, I don't, that's obviously rhetorical, but the only reason I bring it up is I think sometimes we get into these conversations, and I think the outcome of it is people hearing, oh, there they are complaining about their, how terrible, you know, their situation is. That's one of the reasons I really appreciated the historical context you put this in, because if I want to put any sort of positive spin on what was said tonight, in 1825, the Ohio government created a common system of schools and financed public education in Ohio, which meant they saw it as a real positive, as a, as a real need. It is truly the basis of our democracy. And I, I think we lose that in the, in the conversations that we have so often, because unfortunately, it gets tied to the dollars that we all have. And we, as community members, understand the dollars that their community is being asked to pay, and we appreciate every dollar that we get from, from our community. We also understand that if you look at the trajectory of what you, what you mapped out, a lot of this is, and I think Eric said something along these lines, but a lot of it is that everybody is in need of money, so the state is trying to find out ways to, to balance their own budget, I think you said, and in so doing, is unbalancing our budget. I think what's also very positive, and was brought up a number of times, is the fact that we have been cognizant of that, and it's, that's evident in the last several levy cycles, where we've been at lower millages and going longer periods of time. We are trying our best to do what we can, but ultimately, it is our responsibility to provide for the students of this district. Someone in the group mentioned that we have some populations that may or may not need, have more needs. Our, our obligation, our function, our reason for being is to help every student who comes to our doors, and that is, that is a valid and valuable set of, set of values, I just said val, way too many times, but that is, that represents the values of our community, that is what we want to be doing. So we don't blame, and I know no one here would ever say that, we're not blaming any group for costing us more money. As a matter of fact, that's exactly what we want to do, we want to provide them the opportunities they need. So it's important that people hear that this is a choice that we make in all these different areas. The one question I had for you before we started going further was, I was a tiny bit concerned with something you said about the 5.5 number, because in past, in the past, as you said, we usually try and have at least a month of extra. Can you help us to understand the conversation that went on in the Lay Finance Committee, or how you came to the fact that, okay, 5.5 could be the number, because that does seem a bit concerning?
We looked at the three, the three scenarios I gave you, the 5.5, 8.5, and 11.8. And we know, well, the levy didn't pass last year, and we know that people are not anxious to be taxed again, the economy is not great, they're not feeling wonderful about their pocketbooks, and a 5.5 would just get us there. We considered the fact that maybe the economy will pick up, you know, one person said, you never know, we might get more money from the state next year, and then I said, and where we might get less. I mean, you know, it really, you just don't have a clue. This is the least amount we felt you could do. And I know in the past, the Lay Finance Committee has said, this will do what we do right now, and then the board has wanted to look cool, and they've lowered it. And my suggestion is you not try to look cool this time, because you have, you have no cushion there. And, and so we've said 5.5 is the minimum, and, and we really believe that, and if you do do less than that, then I think if my suggestion is right, and monies don't raise, you may have more cuts you have to perform in the future. On the other hand, it's possible that money will come in.
Right, and we did talk a little bit about, you know, the, the fact that, that the administration, I think, has been committed, especially as of late, of making sure that we do try to make sure that the program we have is sustainable, and that we, we look at the enrollment and the classes and all those kinds of things, and, and I think we suggested to the Lay Finance Committee that that's an ongoing process, and that we, you know, would be hopeful that we would continue to be able to, you know, because as Jane said, this scenario assumes that the program remains exactly as it is moving forward in all those years, and, and that might not necessarily be the case, you know, that we, we would continue to look for ways to save money, or to streamline, or to right-size, or whatever you want to call it, to make sure that, that the program is what we want it to be, but also, you know, not excessive in any way.
And then my final question's for you, Mr. Gainer, if, if in fact, the board were to take the path that the Lay Finance Committee suggested, do you have any misgivings about either the, about that number, that millage level?
No, I, I mean, we have had that benchmark before, but there are a lot of other considerations, and, and part of it is simply what can reasonably be supported by the community, and, and I do feel like the administration has made a commitment to, you know, someone actually in our cabinet meeting, it was either this week or last, referred to the whole school funding model as kind of a bankruptcy model, you know, and they've never seen such a thing before, you know, where organizations are required to operate and not have the funds to do it, but I feel comfortable that, that at this level... But I feel comfortable that at this level, at this amount of millage, and I think that the superintendent does as well, that we can make this work, and that we could, you know, continue to look for ways to save money and be efficient, and do what we need to do.
In all the, in all the numbers, you're talking about not having a cushion of even one month's payroll. One month's payroll, what is it, over a three-year levy cycle? What is it, what fraction of a mil is that?
Yeah, well, actually, it would be, because you figure, we would want, and we would have to plug it in because it would compound, but I'm going to say, you know, a mil is a million dollars, and our annual, or our monthly payroll is 6.8.
Okay, so, never mind then.
Yeah. So, we will have to get there, because, but it would be over a period of years that we would want to accumulate that, because we're saying at the end of the levy cycle, this, the 5.5 takes us down to zero. So, from this point, all the way through 2019, any cost savings we would reap would build that final cash balance.
Similar to, I'm sorry, like the city of Cleveland Heights, where they're trying to institute a position where they're going to have building more of a, almost a rainy day fund. So, our rainy day fund basically is, we can do payroll for one more month.
Right, that'd be nice. Everyone wants to get paid.
But it would put us back in the eight range, if we were trying to have that reserve.
Yeah, that's why, okay, never mind.
Motion, that's, all right. So, well, do we...
Do we have to read this?
If someone wants to make a motion? Oh, yeah. The motion, do you want me to read the whole thing?
I would ask that you do.
Okay. So, the motion that I'm, that we're looking for tonight is the following. The Board of Education, the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District, well, I don't have to read the top part, I'm sorry. The resolution is, sorry, I'm trying to read.
I tried to make it easy for you, Kyle.
It's the yellow part, yeah. Okay. Clearly, my education is not kicking in right now. So, I need a resolution declaring it necessary to levy an additional tax for the purpose of current expenses, and requesting the Cuyahoga County Fiscal Officer to certify the total current tax valuation of the school district, and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by that additional levy. Whereas, this board finds that the amount of taxes that may be raised within the 10-mil limitation by levies on the current tax duplicate will be insufficient to provide an adequate amount for the necessary requirements of the school district, and that it is necessary to levy a tax in excess of that limitation for the purpose of current expenses. And whereas, in accordance with Division B of Section 5705.03 of the Revised Code, in order to submit the question of a tax levy pursuant to Section 5705.21 of the Revised Code, this board must request that the Cuyahoga County Fiscal Officer certify, one, the total current tax valuation of the school district, and, two, the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the levy. And whereas, in accordance with Division B of Section 5705.03 of the Revised Code, upon receipt of a certified copy of a resolution of this board declaring the necessity of the tax stating its purpose, whether it is an additional levy, or renewal, or replacement of an existing tax, and a section of the Revised Code authorizing its submission to the electors, and requesting such certification, the county fiscal officer is to certify the total current tax valuation of the school district, and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the proposed levy. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education, the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District, County of Cuyahoga, State of Ohio, that Section 1, this board declares that it is necessary to levy an additional blank mil ad valorem property tax outside of the 10-mil limitation for the purpose of current expenses, and that it intends to submit the question of that additional tax levy for a continuing period of time to the electors at an election on November 8, 2016, as authorized by Section 5705.21 of the Revised Code, goes on. Section 2, this board requests the county fiscal officer to certify to it both, one, the total current tax valuation of the district, and, two, the dollar amount of the revenue that would be generated by the said mil levy specified in Section 1. Section 3, the treasurer, CFO of the board is authorized and directed to deliver promptly to the county fiscal officer a certified copy of this resolution. Section 4, this board finds and determines that all formal actions of this board, and of any of its committees concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were taken, and that all deliberations of this board, and of any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions, were held in meetings open to the public in compliance with the law. Section 5, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from the, and immediately upon its adoption. And in that, if anyone wants to make the motion, please give the mil, the amount of the millage that I put a blank in the resolution. Do I have anyone who'd like to make that motion?
I'll put a motion to put a 5.5 million levy on the ballot.
Second.
Any discussion?
Didn't want each one of us to read a section?
I would have liked you to have offered that earlier, but yes.
Well, I didn't know it was a holiday.
So, okay. Is this just by vote, or by name? Okay, then, Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. So, there's another, just to go over the protocol, there's another reading of this?
Yes. So, I will certify this either the end of this week or the beginning of next week. The county will come back with the numbers, we'll make sure everything is accurate, and then I'll bring a second resolution to you on June 7, the next meeting. June 7, there will be another resolution where you'll have to take formal action again to place the levy on the ballot.
What do we need to communicate out to the community so everybody understands that this is the direction we're going in?
Mr. Wortman actually already has a draft of something prepared that we were working on today, so he can share that out.
The, your report is so powerful. I'd love to be able to see...
Yeah, we'll put that on the, actually, we'll put that on the website, and also, I don't know if you saw, but Mr. Wortman also put an article out today, or was it yesterday or today, that has, gives some examples of House 829, how that works.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that one, I scanned it, I thought the, the explanation of it, I think was very, very valuable and useful, was when people, I think this is a big misconception that, oh, my, my property valuation went up, and my taxes went up. And I always say to folks, unless a school levy was passed, that revenue is not coming to the schools. And I thought it was a very excellent piece in explaining that whole situation where, particularly over a protracted period of time, and it goes back to why I always say to folks, if you pass a school levy, and it raises your taxes $100, unless another levy is passed, it's $100 for the next thousand years, and we all know what inflation's going to do that at the dollar value. So, I thought that piece was excellent.
Yeah, that was a great piece. We'll put Jane's piece on, on the website, and also, you know, Jane has offered to help with an FAQ that we can put out there, too, just on general school funding types of things.
Yeah, there's just so much misinformation. And I know, when I was part of the levy campaigns, just many of the opposition groups, they sort of latch on to these, these facts that just aren't accurate, and they start getting circulated and circulated, and then people start not understanding it. You know, some of that's sort of an intentional tactic. I mean, I really think we need to get out front, accurate, transparent.
So, I have the...
Yeah, we have, okay, so, thank you very much, everyone. We're going to go back to item C1, the ELA book adoption.
So, we have our second reading on the ELA book adoption. Remember, last week, the Ed Services brought that to us, so it's a second reading of that. Are there any questions?
I have...
We have Karen, is Karen here, or Felicia? Yeah, Karen is here.
Well, my only question really was in regard to the reading list, because I think that's actually, is what in, what's listed in here, is that? So, for example, the, I don't know, any of these class, basically, whatever, is this, if they're reading a book, is this the book list for the classes, or is this, this is the book list from their program, not necessarily what we have in, I'm going to use a dated reference, English 201. English 201, we draw from this, but then we put our own stuff into it, or do we just use this?
So, you are using what's in front of you, with the exception of 9 through 12, where we had the extra $30,000 set aside from the proposed cost for purchase of novels at the levels of 9 through 12.
Okay, so, so, K through 8, this is what we use, but then for the high school, we take this, and we add some spices and other stuff into it.
Right. Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was my, that was what I was trying to get, because I had a vibe that we were doing more than just what was in here, but I wanted to get confirmation on that.
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions?
Yeah, I mean, just to sort of reiterate, this is something that's already been budgeted, it's sort of standard, you know, protocol. You know, this is stuff that educators know, and us, laypeople frankly, don't. But getting your materials in the pack, it was really helpful to get an understanding of it.
Yes.
So, get it.
And so, then we have to do the third and final reading will come in June 7, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Karen.
All right, so, now we're going to go back to item C3, because we, we went through all that talk about, about the forecast, but we never approved the forecast, so I need, I need a motion to approve the five-year forecast.
So moved.
Second.
There's a bunch of seconds over there. Any, any further discussion on that?
No, I'd just like to thank Scott and Jane for their presentation. Yeah, very helpful. And I agree with Jim, we have to get behind this and make sure that levy passes.
All right, Mr. Gaynor. Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
All right, and I have one more item. Originally, after this agenda, we talked about the, discussing the FAC, the, and I'm going to let Mr. Posh report back as our, one of our two liaisons.
What is, and what is the FAC, is?
Facilities Accountability Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, the Facilities Accountability Committee. Okay, so Eric and I sort of team go to the FAC meetings, and they met last week. And one of the things that we offered, the FAC, was, you know, in preparing for a meeting that was originally scheduled for tonight, is we'd sort of discuss the FAC, what's working, what's not, putting together a tighter structure so that they could report out to the community. And they're still working through things. We gave them some suggestions in how they could report out. There needs to be some additional work in getting budget information to them. I see Jim Cool in the audience. I don't think there are other members of FAC here, but we are going to be meeting with Project Council, PMC Regency, Eric and I, and members of the FAC who really look at the budget, just so we can get a better sense of where we are in the big scheme of things. It's a very, as we found, it's a moving target. There's just so much change in how the budget gets managed, change orders get put in. We just want to make sure that the folks in the FAC have the same opportunity that staff has when they're making decisions and analyzing things. Because we, I mean, this is, this is the point in the project where we're seeing a lot of change orders, and we need them to weigh in on that. So, we hope to have that done within the next 30 days. And the general consensus by the FAC leadership was, put off a meeting with FAC and the board, and discussion of how the FAC is going to work, probably for 30 days. It'll probably be a next work session, depending on what the schedule is. And I think that's what, that was offered. And we'll give you a more detailed thing in our regular board meeting, but...
Right, right, on June 7. Okay, well, then, thank you, thanks very much, and thanks to the FAC, Jim, thanks for being here tonight as well. All right, with that, unless there's anything else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.